Good evening. Thank you for tuning in and viewing the August 25th, 2020 Meeting of the Arcata Planning Commission. As you know, the Planning Commission meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of COVID-19 virus. Before we start, I want to thank the community for your efforts to practice social distancing. Social distancing and self-isolation are the most effective and practical ways to slow the spread of the virus, increase test outcomes for our medical system. As the number of individuals testing positive for the virus increases, it becomes even more important that we adhere to strong sanitary practices of staying home, washing our hands and surfaces, staying distant from those outside our immediate social units. In addition, the Humboldt County Health Officer has issued an order requiring the use of face coverings. Anyone in an indoor facility and enclosed space or an outdoor space where social distancing of at least six feet is impractical. Remember, you're covering your face to protect others who are vulnerable and most at risk. My name is Judith Mayer and I'm standing in as Vice Chair for Dan Pangney, who is not able to attend today. A few teleconferencing items before we start. First and most importantly, if you're not actively speaking, please mute your microphone. Meeting will be difficult to hear if microphones are not muted, except for the individual person speaking. Second, deliberations and questions will be conducted by roll call. The liaison will manage deliberations. Please raise your hand electronically using the teleconference function if you would like to speak. And I may call roll for last comments, or I may ask Director Royer to do so. Third, all votes will be taken through a roll call vote. Please answer aye or nay when your name is called. And finally, public comment is being accepted by email. Email address for public comments is PC@cityofarcata.org. PC stands for Public Comment. It could also stand for Planning Commission. Emails are accepted for both specific agenda items and general comments. Comments on specific agenda items will be read by staff during that agenda item time. Public can email additional public comments now to be read and be recorded as part of this meeting. So first, can we begin with the call to order? Director Royer, would you start the roll call?
Happy to. Vice Chair Mayor? Commissioner Davies?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Visage Elkhart?
Here.
Commissioner Figaroa?
Here.
And Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
All present, except for the chair.
We're also joined by Community Development Director Eva Boya, Planners, Dilo Fredas, and Joe Matier, and an anonymous so city's hall staffer who's running the electronics. Is there anyone else I'm missing?
Not present on staff side. We do have one of the applicants present at the time.
Okay. So with oral communications, Director Royer, do we have any public comment that should be read before we start? And there's actually some material that I'm probably supposed to read here. This time is provided for people to adjust the commission or submit written communications on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements, but any request that requires commission action will be set by the commission for a future agenda or referred to staff. So do we have any oral communications?
We have no written oral communications. Must see sole community member who's here that has oral communications. It looks like we have none.
Okay, in that case, we'll proceed to the consent calendar. The only item on the consent calendar is the agenda of our last meeting. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be retained by the commission and are enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is required, we'll remove it from the consent calendar. At the end of the reading, commissioners or members of the public can request that an item be removed for consideration. So the item on the consent calendar today is to approve the Planning Commission minutes of our regular meeting on July 28, 2020. Are there any commissioners or others who would like to remove that item from the consent calendar for discussion? And if not, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, can we call roll?
Absolutely. Commissioner Barstow?
Hi.
Commissioner Figaroa?
Hi.
Commissioner White?
Hi.
Commissioner Davies?
Hi.
Commissioner Visage Elkhart?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Mayor?
Hi.
The motion passes.
Okay, we approved our minutes on the consent calendar. We have two public hearings today. And let's see. Prior to each public hearing, commissioners will be asked to provide information about any ex parte disclosures or communications. Disclosures included summary of information and sources that are gathered outside of this public hearing. Do we have any ex parte disclosures from any commission members on the first item on our public hearing agenda? Okay. First item on the agenda is a hearing on the approval of a use permit for the SMB Water Incorporated Incorporated use permit at 4671 West End Road, file number 190-035-UP. And I'm wondering if we can have a staff report on this item, please?
Yes, good evening. Could I have the PowerPoint presentation? Good evening, planning commissioners and other community members tuning in. My name is Joe Matier, Senior Planner with the City of Arcata, the assigned planner for this project. Before you this evening is a use permit application for the operation of a cannabis manufacturing and distribution. Staff is recommending, if you could go to next slide, please. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the use permit for this use by adopting attachment A. Attachment A is the action. It includes the project findings, which is Exhibit 1, and the conditions of approval Exhibit 2. In addition to adopting that action, it will include a Class 1 existing facilities categorical exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide, please. The project is located in the City of Arcata in the West End Road area. It is part of the cannabis innovation zone. It's an Area 2. That is why a use permit is required. It is located at the end of a road, private road. And you'll see it centered there. There's backs up against agricultural property and then 299 to the north and west. There are about six other use permits that are operating cannabis activities just in that immediate area and to the north. There's not, the adjacent parcels to the south are not cannabis operations, but we do have some others there. Next slide, please. The parcel is about 16,000 square feet. There's an existing light industrial building there, about 2,500 square feet. It was a subdivision that was done about 2004 and it's at the end of the road. Access to the property is through a private road and there are some other easements on the property that have drainage and access there. The building was developed for a prior use and the applicant has indicated that this particular structure is well-suited for their operations, pretty much a plug and play. They can just use very little interior improvements are required for them to utilize the existing facilities. Next slide, please. The site is, here's the site plan and it does show most of the infrastructure there. There's quite a bit of area that is not utilized and developed, so there is area for potential redevelopment and expansion of the uses there. Next slide, please. The project includes the manufacture of cannabis concentrates using cold water and agitation. They make a product called Bubble Hash or Dry Sift Tea. There's a rosin process of pressed hash and then infused of pre-rolled cigarettes, cannabis cigarettes. There's no cultivation of cannabis at this site and there is no use of any chemicals or gases to create that concentrate through the manufacturing process. And then the applicant will be, distribution of those products manufactured on site. The process using the cold water and agitation, there's a series of processes where it breaks down much of the THC concentrates and the applicant will be able to, the planning commission has a question, to be able to answer those more thoroughly than I will. But there's several sieves that then collect that concentrate and then it's dried and then used for the different products itself. The applicant is going to try to use, reuse the water as much as possible, but there will be about 200 gallons of water that is discharged into the city's wastewater system. Next slide, please. The, I did want to indicate that this is the 17th use permit in Area 2. The Planning Commission has already issued 16 use permits and they're, I believe most of them are in operation. There are some that are still working, becoming operational. In June of this year, the City Council directed staff to increase the number of use permits in Area 2 to 30. So that'll be coming before the Planning Commission shortly. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the action, improve the use permit for the cannabis manufacturing and distribution. It includes findings of approval and the conditions of approval. The staff through the referral process and the application material did not really require us to add many conditions of approval. They're pretty standard conditions of approval. We did want to ensure that there were odor control mechanisms in place on the site to ensure that no off-site odors from the manufacturing and distribution process would affect neighboring properties there. And other than that, staff is willing to answer any questions. Again, we recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the action, approving the project and adopting the categorical exemption for California Environmental Quality Act. The applicant is present through the Zoom meeting and we'd be happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, Leonard Matier. And I'm wondering if any commissioners have any questions of staff of this project? And I suggest that you speak up because I won't necessarily see your hand raised.
I don't have any questions. I think it's a very simple application and a very low-impact manufacturing process.
Okay, if I can request that we keep evaluations and deliberations until the later part of the meeting. That would be good. Right now, if there are any questions of staff, that would be very helpful and also possibly if there are questions that you would like the applicant to respond to, we can bring them up at this point and then applicant or representative may be able to respond later. Any questions?
Not seeing any.
Okay, then we'll proceed to the public comment portion of the hearing. Typically, we allow the applicant or the applicant's agent to speak first and then other members of the public can speak as well. If the applicant or agent would like to speak, this is the time and please tell us who you are as well.
Good evening. My name is Baron Lutz and I would like to start off by thanking the commission for taking the time and thanking staff for generating the staff report. They've made it really easy and very communicative during the entire process, so I'd really like to thank staff for that. I originally started this business around four years ago and we were operating in Willow Creek. We were one of the first manufacturers to be approved in Humboldt County. As business progressed, we had to scale and we scaled out of our building in Willow Creek. So about last year, I came to staff and asked them what they thought of a certain parcel that was for sale and they said they thought it would be adequate. And that's kind of, that was almost a year ago, so I'm very happy to be at the stage and presenting to you guys. I feel that our concentration method is water and agitation. It's absolutely the cleanest, kind of safest concentration method there is because all we are doing is using water and ice. And I'm looking forward to operating in Arcata and I have a lot of my staff who live in Arcata already and they're very happy to stop commuting to Willow Creek. I don't know if there's any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much. After Mr. Lutz, are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on this proposed project?
There have been no emails received through the PC@cityofarcata.org on this topic.
Okay, Mr. Lutz, is there anything that you'd like to add? Typically, the applicant gets the first and the last comment.
No, I just thank you guys for taking the time. I'm very excited to operate in Arcata.
Okay, well, thank you very much. At this point, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing and proceed to commission deliberations. If each of the commissioners who wishes to speak would tell us what they're thinking, that would be good. I think if you have a raised hand, I'd be happy to call on you first. Otherwise, I'll call on you in the order in which you appear on my computer screen, if that's all right. Okay, no, no, no super eager people. In that case, Commissioner White, do you have anything you'd like to say, ask, or discuss about the proposed project?
I do not. Thank you.
Commissioner Davies?
I do not. Thank you.
Commissioner Visage Elkhart? Nope, Commissioner Barstow?
Just, all I have to say is it seems like a very straightforward application and the applicant answered the only question I had, which was some of the materials submitted made it sound like they were already in operation. And indeed, they have been in operation, so I think it's a good sign that they'll be transplanting an up-and-going business to Arcata.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Figaroa?
I've got no comment.
Okay, and I guess my comments are, again, I believe that it is a fairly straightforward recommendation. The description of the processes are clear. It appears to meet the standards we've set for this use permit. And I guess in that case, we're ready to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Use Permit Number 190-035 for SMB Water Inc.
Okay, and does your motion include all of the other?
Includes the category, yeah.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Director Royer, would you be willing to call the roll for this vote?
Absolutely. Commissioner Davies?
Hi.
Commissioner White?
Hi.
Commissioner Visage Elkhart?
Hi.
Commissioner Barstow?
Hi.
And Commissioner Figaroa?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Mayor?
Hi.
Okay, that's a 6-0-0 vote.
Okay, it appears that this item passes and we recommend approval of the project. Congratulations, Mr. Lutz. And we're ready to move on to the next public hearing on our agenda. First, do we have any ex parte communications or disclosures? On our second item, the All Plains Gas Station rebrand design review, 3197 Alliance Road. Apparently none. In that case, do we have a staff report about the proposed project?
We do, yes. I will be providing the report. But at the end of my report, David or Joe may jump in with any final things that I may have missed. This one kind of took a staff village as we deliberated the design and how to condition the project. I am really jealous that Joe had a presentation. I didn't realize we could do that over Zoom. I will make sure to have that prepared next time. But I'm just going to give a verbal report and I'll reference some of the pages in your packet, so have those on the ready. So I'm just going to start with the recommendation. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission approve the proposed signage updates with the conditions suggested by adopting the action with the findings, conditions of approval, and modified site plan, which includes a Class 1 categorical exemption for existing facilities pursuant to CEQA. So I wanted to just really broad brush orient everyone in the commission to the context of this project really quickly. As I know that there are some commissioners who probably have never reviewed a sign project before and who may not necessarily have all the details on what designer view used to look like, as opposed to what it looks like now. So designer view has definitely changed in the last few years and a lot of projects that used to come before the Historic and Design Review Committee now come before Planning Commission and a lot of projects, including the majority of signs that used to go before the Designer Review Committee, now are purely reviewed administratively, which means that it's done at a staff level prior to issuing a building permit. And there is no public hearing or opportunity for neighbors to necessarily involve themselves in the process of approval. So typically, according to new designer view regulations, signage is approved administratively with one exception, which is master sign permits in the plaza area, since that's considered the most sensitive architecturalism in the city. This project is a master sign permit. It is not in the plaza area. But due to concerns about neighborhood compatibility and how to condition the project, staff decided it was a good idea to elevate this project to the commission to allow for greater public participation and allow the commission to kind of guide the conditions as they saw fit. And one other kind of note of context, and I'm a little late to this party too, I've only been here a little over a year. But there are precedents kind of both ways in terms of gas station rebranding. Apparently, a few years ago, there was a project that came forward with a pretty similar rebranding. Staff recommended certain conditions and the Planning Commission chose to override those recommendations and approve the project essentially as submitted. But there are also, there's also precedent for past projects. There was a 76 gas station rebrand that I found where the Historic and Design Review Committee at the time had wanted the 76 logo changed to wood as opposed to plastic. So there definitely are some variations on the interpretation of the regulations and I think that the key here is balancing the fact that gas station rebrands tend to be pretty much too industry standard with the fact that Arcata has a very, you know, strong history of wanting to move past industry standard into something that really better fits the community. And we also have some pretty clear guidance in the design elements and in the zoning code about making sure that design is compatible with neighborhoods and small in scale and really attempts to protect the rural character of the community. So with all that being said, the proposed project at hand is a rebrand of an existing gas station at the intersection of Alliance and Spear in Arcata. They are proposing about 200 square feet of signage on site. For context to that, they have about 75 square feet of signage on site currently. And the cutoff per the sign ordinance of the City of Arcata is 20 square feet. So what they're proposing is about 10 times over what is typically allowed without a master sign permit and two or three times more than what they currently have on site. So this master sign permit is kind of broken into a few different categories of proposed signage on site, which is included in your packet near the end. And so they are proposing a few different things. One is including Patriot signage on the canopy. Another is including channel lettering food marks on the existing food mark. And they also are proposing some pretty extensive modifications to the pre-existing gas freestanding sign on the intersection of Alliance and Spear. So staff conditions on this project are kind of in two categories. The majority of recommendations relate to the freestanding sign for a couple of different reasons, but primarily because it is a legal bond conforming sign that does not currently conform to high revision experience standards in the city. And there's kind of this bucket of others. So I'm just going to run this pretty quickly through proposed changes. And again, these are recommendations from staff. They can all be altered or increased. So the first one that kind of falls outside of the freestanding sign is reducing sign area on the food marks, bringing it down to about 75% of the proposed. And there are a couple of conditions regarding reducing illumination and glare on the site, which have nothing to do with the signage proposed, but are more operational conditions. One is One is to install new lighting with dimmers. And the other condition is to require that the brightest canopy lights are turned off during non-operational hours. So the intent of both of those things is to essentially increase compatibility by not making things that are unnecessarily large or bright and that don't really fit with the neighborhood context. One of the reasons that staff, you know, deliberated on was, well, are there other gas stations in the vicinity that would require large, bright signage, kind of like as a competition between uses? But this site is located in a very small kind of neighborhood commercial area with only four commercially zoned parcels totally surrounded by neighborhood. So there's no other competition, no other sources of glare or really nighttime activity at all. So there's no need to make things really large and really bright necessarily. So those were some conditions related to that. And then the one other condition that is proposed that is not related to the freestanding sign is to improve the existing landscaping on site around the freestanding sign at the intersection. There is an existing landscaped area, but staff has included a proposed condition to replant with drought powered plants and just attempt to spruce up the landscape area a little bit, but not increase it. So digging into the freestanding sign, which you could find on packet page 39, I think that's probably the one that will take the most discussion. So the proposed changes to this sign are kind of broken again into two categories. One category is more aesthetic and the other category is more just health and safety and code compliance attempts to take this existing non-conforming sign and not totally remove it, but condition it in a way that brings it closer toward compliance with current code provisions. So starting with items to attempt to bring that sign closer for compliance with current code. We discussed the project with the city engineer and got his thoughts on it. In that area of the site, the signs are limited to 10. But he recommended that unless there is a pressing reason why that sign can't be brought to the height that is allowed per our standards, to bring it down to 10 feet. And he also recommended that, you know, even though it's unlikely that vision clearance will really be an issue at that site because it is a four-way stop at Alliance and Spear. And so cars are already going to be going pretty slow. He suggested to just make sure that we are not increasing non-conformity by enclosing further portions of the sign than necessary. So, you know, options are to either leave as is with the existing open sections on the side, the bottom, or as staff suggested, remove the gasoline section in the middle, which would still leave a sort of vision clearance in the middle part of the sign, but would be closer to the proposed redesign. So we thought that might be kind of a compromise. And the final thing is that part of the sign is illuminated already. However, that is another non-conforming element of the signage. And so we are suggesting that the planning commission condition the sign to be non-illuminated as opposed to illuminated with the exception of the digital lettering, which are just bright. And the final suggestions are not related to code provisions, but more just to, you know, attempting to speak to Arcata's interest in remaining small in scale. It is to remove the size of the lettering on the sign to limit it to six inches for the numbering and then the price labels, limiting those to two inches or a third of the size of the numbering, which is kind of the industry minimum standard, which is allowed to all gas stations by state law. And I know that Joe did some research into that. And so if there are any questions about that specific regulation, I'm hoping that he will jump in, dial a friend, see if he's still on the line. So I guess, yeah, in closing, we appreciate that there is investment happening at this site and we want to honor the attempt to improve the site conditions while also keeping in mind what we know of what the community has already said in the past that they want development to look like and feel like in the city. So we are hoping that the commission can guide us in this kind of tricky area. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much for interfaith us. You mentioned that Domitir or David Loya might also have something to say.
I think Dilo did a fantastic staff report. I don't think we have anything to add. But we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, are there any questions that commission members would like to ask staff? Or questions that they would like to ask at this time so that the project proponent, the applicant, or their agent might be able to answer later during the public comment period?
Commissioner White? Commissioner White has your hand up.
Yes.
So I was just wanting to know with regards to operational hours, are they subject to change with regards to the canopy lighting illumination?
So to clarify, is your question, that is your question just that the hours may change in future and how would we ensure the condition reflects the potential for hours to change?
Thank you for that clarification. Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah. So in terms of the actual operational hours, I'm hoping that Jeff, the agent for the project, can speak to that. I requested that he check in with the owner and get an answer on what their current operational hours are. And they may at this time actually be non-standard because the gas station is currently non-operational, but the food mark is still rendition it in such a way that it will be flexible depending on what the operational hours are. And I believe that the condition doesn't currently read, you know, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM or something like that. I think it was kept pretty broad.
Yeah, I think the intent behind the condition to limit the lighting when the facility isn't open did not specify a specific time, but it's really intended to ensure that the lights just aren't left on if there's no need to leave them on. And we've given some flexibility to ensure that they can have the lighting necessary for security at the facility when it isn't operational or if they have, you know, drive-by pumps when the store is not open.
Any other questions to staff?
Could I ask for clarification on this?
Please.
So I guess, is there any provision, say, for example, down the road, they decide to be 24 hours operation? Is there any way during, say, I don't know, X amount of time till 5:00 in the morning, that maybe those lights could be further dim? Just thinking about the residents and if for some reason it did extend from, you know, open hours in the wee hours of the morning?
The use itself is not an open item at this point. It's an existing use at the site. So we're not discussing their operational hours, but certainly the commission, I suppose, could put limitations on the hours that the lighting could be on, regardless of whether they're, you know, operational during those times. And with the provision that they have included in the existing or the proposed conditions, they'd be able to operate those lights at a minimum level necessary to, you know, provide for safety even still.
Any other questions of staff? No one else has any questions? I actually have a couple of questions of staff or of the applicant if you can. Our pack included some graphics showing the proposed lights and signs during the daytime. It does seem that the real issue that people are concerned about here is how they would look at night. And we don't have any graphics that really give us any of that.
I do have an answer to that. I have a great answer. I'm so glad that you asked that question. Packet page 45 was submitted by the applicant's agent to showcase what a similar project could look like at night. Looks a bit like this. I'm sure it'll be a lot clearer on your screen than it is in the black and white printed photo. But the point he wanted to make too is that the channel lettering will be similar to this and also this lit strip on the canopy itself.
Which strip are you referring to?
Directly above the Chevron channel lettering, there is a little LED strip of lighting, which is similar to what's being proposed here.
Okay, so that light part on the Patriot sign would not be illuminated? It would be a little channel of lights at the very top of that?
Correct, yes. And that was a bit unclear from the site plan. So we requested that you submit a photo showing a similar design and this is what was submitted.
Okay, and the Patriot lettering would be illuminated because the flag with the stars would not be?
The flag and stars would also be illuminated. I'm sorry, can you, was that a question? I didn't hear the last one.
Yeah, which, what exactly on that canopy would be illuminated at night?
The lettering would be illuminated and the flag logo would be illuminated.
Okay, but not that big white area. Thank you for those graphics. Not the big white area that surrounds it.
Correct.
The big light area will look similar to this where the blue area is. So the blue is not itself illuminated, but it has LED shining down on it.
Okay, and do you have any nighttime models of the the Patriot gas sign with the prices on it? I know that at that Chevron station and at the other, that was kind of an issue. So do you have any graphics that would help us imagine what?
We don't have that. So that Patriot out at Valley West is identical in branding to what we're proposing here. I think it's been there for two or three years now. But as far as, I mean, what Dilo has here is our closest replication of that. For a photograph for you.
I'd like to point out to, to address the question that we did not ask for specific models or, you know, images to indicate what the site would look like at night. But we did try and include in the conditions of approval enough detail that would give us performance standards that would allow us to, you know, monitor over time. This is a fairly significant change in the amount of lighting on the site, even though it's designed to, you know, to be relatively dim. The, you know, the general plan has policies that require that new light sources don't leave the site so that they're compliant with night sky, you know, dark skies provisions. And so we've, we've included those same conditions that would allow us to say, hey, you know, we've asked for dimmers on the lighting. So if the planning commission approves those, if it does turn out that it's too bright, we can adjust it over time. But the intent is that it won't leave the site. And I think it's fairly consistent. Most modern gas stations are designed to try and accommodate that sort of onsite lighting. But we have plenty of examples where those canopy lights, instead of being recessed or shielded, they just have a drop, you know, glass shield and there's quite a bit of off-site glare as a result of those. So we'll continue to work out to ensure compliance with those conditions.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. Are there any other commissioners with questions? And I actually can't see with the graphic up, I can't see other commissioners. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, in that case, we will open the public comment portion of the public hearing and we'll ask applicants or their agent if you'd like to speak first.
Yeah, that's fine. Can I clarify something that on this, this is just a signage application. We're not, no part of this application.
Excuse me, can you identify yourself first? That would really help us.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I'm Janie Ficklehill and I am on All Point Sign. So I'm the sign company that's going to be installing these signs.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So, yeah, we're not, none of this application is speaking to any of the canopy lights, you know, the down lighting or the site lights on here. And that's been discussed a little bit. It's just about signage. So David mentioned that there's a significant increase in lighting, but sign lights by nature are not, they're not spotlights. They're not designed as floodlights or anything like that. They're only designed to illuminate themselves. So they don't produce any ambient light that will be leaving the property or would even have any impact on anyone if there was none of the canopy lights on or the, the security floodlights there. So you don't really notice much of signage lights other than the fact that it illuminates itself. So you can see the sign, but it's not illuminating the surrounding areas. Like I said, we have a site that's branded identical to this out at Valley West. It's been there like for about two years, I think. We had a similar staff report recommending that we make modifications to it and the Arcata Planning Commission decided to go against that and just approve it as submitted. I believe our submittal and, you know, Arcata aside, I think there is nine other sites in Humboldt County that are branded identical to this. So it's very important to the applicant and their brand that they remain consistent across our county. Something I definitely want to speak to is the recommendations for the proposed pylon sign on the corner, the price sign. I think it would be a grand error to recommend that we change the lettering size to smaller than recommended, this being a neighborhood and schools around and people walking on sidewalks and Arcata being a bike friendly community. I think it's the planning commissioner's job to do everything possible to make, to allow our sign to be as easy to read. So if you have a 12-inch letter with a gas price on it and you're driving down the road, it takes you, you know, a fifteenth of a second to glance up and read that price and be able to comprehend that. When you have a smaller letter, the passing motorists have to divert their eyes off of the roadway for a much longer time to try to get the same amount of information into their brain. Same with the reducing the Diesel Supreme Plus to two inches. That's a tiny letter. So when you're driving down the road and you're trying to decipher and read this sign, you're going to have to be looking off the road a lot longer, the smaller that you guys condition this. As far as construction standpoint, that's a, we're not proposing to change the height of the sign at all. I don't understand why we'd want to go out there and basically we'd be bringing that sign down into the landscaping, which then again would make it more difficult to read. You know, there's plants and stuff in there. I don't even know if you'd be able to see the diesel. So I'm hoping that we can get the planning commission to look at this project as a whole and know that we've had this site in Arcata for two years or a similar site, excuse me. I don't believe we've had any complaints or any backlash from its branding there and go against staff recommendation to reduce the size and approve the project as submitted.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment in addition to Mr. Wills?
The applicant is also here, represented by Ms. Toasty. She may want to speak as well.
Okay, would you like to speak? Ms. Toasty?
Sure, I would. So speaking on behalf of my father, who has owned this gas station for, I think, now 22 years. And it actually has been a gas station since, I believe, 1950, if we go back and look at the records for the city of Arcata. You know, we, we took on this project, of course, during these unprecedented times and figured it would be a great improvement for the community and for the neighborhood. Of course, this has been in Of course, this has been an expensive project on our behalf. And we have received a lot of positive support from our neighbors who have been excited about the project, who have been following all the construction works. As the weeks go by, we've, the, the gas, the gas portion of the station has been shut down for about three and a half weeks and, you know, we, we get inquiries every day as to when we're going to open up again. People excited about having newer gas pumps just to make things easier for our customers. They're excited about being able to pay directly at the pump. So that has been also a new improvement done to the, to the pumps. You know, it is important to have enough lighting for safety measures in the, in the neighborhood. There is, you know, we are located at one of the busiest intersections of the city of Arcata. So, you know, it is important, I think, to at night have enough lighting, have large enough numbers. So when people are, of course, you know, we all shop around for gas prices and where we're going to fill up and what's convenient for us as consumers. So I think it is important for, you know, in terms of visual aspect, to have large enough price numbers and have it be clear to what we are selling, right? And just provide that convenience for community members and our current clients and customers. And just, you know, improve the, the neighborhood and have that accessibility to our, to our customers. And, you know, we've, we've been there for a long time and we will continue to own the gas station and provide the best service we can. So, yeah, I mean, we are, it's a local, we are local business owners. It's a family business. We all chip in, my dad, my mom, my brother and I. So we are all heavily invested in this business. Yeah, and, and just want to provide a project and a commercial property that is dignified for this neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any members of the public who would like to comment? And Director Loya, are there any public comments that have been sent in over email?
We have not received any public comment on the project via email. I would appreciate an opportunity to clarify a couple of items from the staff report if the commission is interested in that.
Okay, yeah, that would, that would be great if you'd like to clarify anything you'd like to add there. And, and incidentally, we, we still are in the public comment period. So, yes.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any new public comment.
Okay, would, would you like to add those clarifications now or wait until we're deliberating?
It's up to you.
I know that way it will leave it open. If there are any public comments that are, that are coming in, it will give us a few moments for them to arrive. So I have Director Loya.
Okay, so I just, you know, I first wanted to just state that, you know, we, we truly do support local businesses and we really appreciate the facelift that's being proposed on the gas station here and the investment and the time and energy that the Toastys have put into this. And so the staff recommendations, you know, I hope the planning commission doesn't take them to be antithetical to those, those common goals. I do want to sort of address a couple of the items that were mentioned. The fact that there are conditions of approval related to the site lighting and the idea that there's no new site lighting. I just want the commission to really understand that part of what we're recommending here, both with the site lighting and with the landscaping, as well as with the sign height, is that the property come into conformance. This is an existing non-conforming use right now. Oh, I'm sorry, it's existing use that didn't have the benefit of a permit. Right now, you were to try and establish a gas station in that area, it would require a minor use permit. There'd be a whole process that would include conditions of approval. The site characteristics would be, you know, created with the existing land use code site standards. The city didn't have the benefit of addressing site standards when it adopted its new land use code. But it does state explicitly in that land use code that existing conditions are intended to be brought forward to current standards when, when projects come forward. And so with this project, I mean, it is a fairly minor project. It's only a sign permit. And so we're not asking for the entire site to come into conformance with the entire code. But we are asking for a few, for the commission to consider a few minor tweaks on the site conditions to bring it closer to conformance. So the first one having to do with making sure that site lighting doesn't go offsite. That's something that's codified in our general plan. We believe it has both nexus and proportionality, two tests that need to be met to have a legal condition. Similarly, the planting, right now, the plants, I understand, have been, you know, probably mowed, mowed down to clear for the construction that's going on there. You don't want to have nice landscaping right next to construction, but we're asking that some plants be planted there and that, you know, you dress up the corner and that brings it not into conformance with the code, but at least addresses some of the landscape requirements. And the size of the, the marquee sign on the corner is non-conforming size. Originally, planning staff were going to recommend that the existing non-conforming condition be retained and that the applicant be allowed to work around that. But we got feedback from the police department, the engineering department requesting that that site, that the vision clearance triangle impediments presented by that sign be reduced by bringing it to conformance with the code. And so that's why we're asking for the changes. And to that point, I just wanted to dig in a little deeper so that we're all clear as to what the staff recommendation is. So I'll share with you one of the packet pages here that shows the staff proposed changes in red lettering. The concept here is not to bring the sign elevation, the lower sign elevation, down any lower. In fact, the police department said that they wanted to make sure that this space underneath the sign remained clear. This isn't part of public safety so that people can't hide behind the sign. You can see people if they're on the other side of that sign. Right now, the sign is approximately 12 feet and the concept is to bring it down to approximately 10 feet in the conditions of approval by modifying this sign, not by dropping the entire thing, but modifying it. A couple of modifications that have been proposed are to remove this. That would also help with site clearance and to shrink the size of these numbers and the size of these letters. I believe that between the recommendations that were made here, you could end up with an elevation, lower elevation that is no lower than the existing sign and an upper elevation that brings it into conformance with site conditions. So the request, just to be clear, is to retain this entire sign area from the lower bar to the top of the existing panel and just replace it with these modifications. And then the staff recommendation is to actually shrink the size of these so that this sign can come into conformance for public health and safety purposes. To address the size, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just wondering, I, I wasn't sure about the clarifications. If we can remind people that the public hearing portion of the meeting is still open. So it's unusual for staff to be presenting extensively during that portion of the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you invited me to. My, my mistake.
No, I thought it was a clarification rather than a longer explanation.
This is a clarification on the difference between what was presented initially by staff and the the statements that were made by the applicant. I just wanted the commission to understand what's being requested here.
Please continue, but keep in mind, members of the public, this is also a public comment period. You're still able to provide comments if you wish. So, yeah.
Yeah, I, I will hold. I, I intended to present to you before your deliberations, not during a public comment period. And I, I'm sorry, that was my misunderstanding.
No, I, we, we, we need to hear what you have to say. I, I thought you had finished staff report at that. So, why don't you finish, but also keep in mind that the public may comment at this time as well.
Okay. Okay, so the staff is recommending reducing the size of these letterings and numberings, the overall size of the sign, do in part because the, that's what the code directs us to do. That's what the general plan directs us to do. And the applicant is 100% right. There was a Patriot station that was rebranded a few years ago. Staff made a similar recommendation despite the fact that there was a Chevron immediately across the street that had larger numbers and letters and their marquee sign was, was larger. And the argument that staff made at the time was, well, there may be, you know, a gas station immediately across the street, but our intent is to try and bring this project into conformance with the code. The planning commission's reasoning during their deliberations at that time was that it was consistent with the industry standard and the conditions in the surrounding neighborhood. And so as a result, approved those larger and requested signed numbers and letters. That's not the condition for this, that's not the, the situation in this site. And these, these recommendations do have to be very site-specific. And so really the deliberation point, the condition, the commission needs to make is whether or not, you know, reducing the size of that sign, reducing the size of those letterings makes the project more consistent with the surrounding uses and the existing neighborhood conditions or not. And if they feel like that recommendation is not needed to make it consistent with those surrounding conditions, then, you know, the, the project as proposed, as proposed would be approvable without that condition.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. I'd remind us that the public comment period is still open. Are there any more comments from members of the public? And Mr. Loya, since you did speak extensively during this period, if the applicant would like to say anything else, I think we have to give them an opportunity to do so as well.
Yeah, I just want to just counter the, the size argument. I, I can't stress this enough. As a sign professional for 14 years and a billboard expert here, making these letters smaller and the digits smaller is not going to change anyone's opinion about the sign being there. It's just going to make it more difficult for people to see. So from a health and safety standpoint, any reduction in sign size is just going to make it more difficult for them to see it, which is going to cause motorists to have to take their eyes off the road for a longer period of time. So I think that's moving in the wrong direction. I really just think this is a well-proportioned sign to the site. So.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Loya, are, are there any other comments from the public on email that have come in?
There are none.
Okay, in that case, we'll close the public comment portion of this hearing and start the deliberation part of the hearing and ask members of the planning commission for your thoughts. Commissioner White has her hand up.
Thank you. So I had a couple of questions with regards to the signage. So I appreciate Debbie Toasty's branding continuity. And what I'm wanting to know is if we were to keep with the recommendation of going from 12 foot to 10 foot, rather than reducing, say, the price for safety reasons, would it be possible to maybe, as suggested, the word gasoline and possibly even the logo so that people are still being safe, they can see the price? And so instead of doing maybe the industry minimum, perhaps the industry standard, taking into account what Allpoint was saying with regards to signage, but still meeting the recommendation of making that sign 10 foot instead of 12 by adjusting perhaps, say, the logo so that it's still, does that make sense?
Okay, I, I'm going to ask you to put that question on the table, but not to actually have a back and forth discussion about particular parts of the standard right now since this is our deliberation part of the meeting. Any other thoughts from planning commissioners? Commissioner of the state Elkhart?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I, I do believe that the staff recommendation is more consistent with that site. I think comparing this site with the Valley West site, it's completely different. Valley West is a, is a larger site. There's more traffic, all that kind of stuff. This is a small little area. And it's, well, for example, the fire department requires their numbers on our houses to be six inches. Fire, I mean, that's way more important than the price of gas. So if it's good enough for the fire department, I'm sure it's, people can see it just fine. It's a really slow subdivision or area and there's so much residential housing right there. I feel like we should just, I feel like staff recommendation is really fair and I think it'll work really well. Even six inches is going to be easy to read. Like I say, the fire department can find your house number six inches. I'm sure somebody driving by, the slow intersection can easily read the price of gas. So that's, I just want to throw that out there.
Okay, any other commissioner thoughts? Yes, Commissioner Berstow?
I totally support the conditions as, as worked out by the staff. And I want to compliment them on, on coming up with some changes that if, if we were doing a real design review and we're sitting down and discussing all these aspects, we'd probably come to the, what they're suggesting as a compromised position. So, yeah, so anyway, I think they're right on the money and I, I have nothing more to say about it.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners' thoughts? Commissioner Figueroa or Commissioner Davies, do you have any thoughts about the project?
Sorry, it looks like Commissioner White has her hand up.
Okay, Commissioner White?
Sorry, I don't want to belabor the issue. I just needed some clarification. And it may be very well that I didn't understand the sizing. So is it going to be six inches or is it going to be two inches for the gas price? Because that's significant.
The price will be six. The lettering will be two inches.
Okay, thank you very much. And, and that's based on the conditions of approval from staff, not the proposal from the applicant.
Thank you for the clarification.
Um, I guess I'll express my own opinion and I fully support the staff proposed conditions of approval. I was on the planning commission when we approved the, the signs at, at gas stations on Valley West. I thought the commission actually made a bit of a mistake then in allowing that much light and large-sized letters, even in that entirely commercial area. But when you get into a residential area like this with four-way stop signs so that nobody next to those signs is going to be driving past, they're going to be stopped. I think six-inch lettering on the price is more than sufficient. Those LED lights are very, very Those LED lights are very, very bright in that area and the lamp light coming from the remodeled gas station, even though it might not shine out from that site, will be visible for long distances in that residential neighborhood. And in fact, for for some people whose eyes don't adjust to bright lights at night quickly as other people, it 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 will actually wash out the body to for some people to see properly around those corners. So any more light than than what the staff recommendations have prescribed in those conditions of approval is way too much, and I would probably recommend going down from there rather than even as even as much as they recommended. So we 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 can provide those staff recommendations in our conditions of approval. And I think it's up to the applicant to decide how they will abide by those conditions in terms of design. And and there, I think Commissioner White, your suggestions might make a lot of sense as well. But any other deliberations from the commission, Commissioner Davies?
Yeah, I drove by and looked at the location and I'm I agree with staff and I actually probably land closer to Vice Chair Mayor's view regarding the size of letters and the lighting. That's my take on the situation.
And anyone else? Thank you. Commissioner Figueroa, it looked like you were about to say something.
I raised my hand, but I guess nobody saw it. So in respects to, I just I just feel that the lighting and the illumination of the lighting just needs to be in compliance with dark sky requirements. I don't think we need to get into the into the brush regarding specific lumens and so and so forth. I think with the proposal by the by the planning staff, by eliminating some of the lighting in the proposed signage is is adequate. I feel that the sizing of, for instance, the type of fuels going down to two inches may be too small. Perhaps maybe four inches. You know, so we can kind of meet somewhere in the middle. Rather than two inches, I'm just thinking about two inches. It's, you know, roughly about this big and then seeing it from a distance. I don't know. It just may be a little bit difficult. And it's still, the four inches would still fit with the the area that's allowed within the polygon that is also fitted to have the digital lights for the pricing. So I think, you know, that may be some sort of measure in which we can essentially kind of meet somewhere halfway in the middle. But overall, I'm in agreement with the with the with the staff, with the staff's recommendations regarding reducing the size of it, reducing the lighting. But, you know, regards of the just overall lumen requirements, I just say that we've stayed in compliance with dark sky requirements.
Okay, thank you. One thing that's come up in listening to discussions and staff's explanations and the applicants that I'm wondering about is if payment at those pumps will be direct. It does seem like the operational hours of this gas station in effect are being extended to 24-hour operation. And so I'm wondering if it makes sense to actually specify hours at which the lighting on that signage will will be bright and then indicate hours when, for the sake of the neighborhood, the intensity of that lighting would be reduced. Given the very much increased area of lighting that's involved here, almost 200 square feet. I don't know if commissioners have any feelings about that. Commissioner White.
Yeah, I would propose to put that on the table with regards to hours of operation as one of the conditions of approval if that's something we discuss. No.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we can say anything about hours of operation for the gas station. That's my understanding is that's not what's on the table here. But we may be able to say something about hours of operation for lighting.
That's what I was meaning. I concur with what you said. So that they would be dimmable during a specific, like if they were to be operating during the wee hours that there would be dimmable lighting so that it didn't, you know, so that it would be consistent with night skies and also take into account that the neighborhood is very close by.
Staff, staff have any recommendations for how that might work?
The, I guess the feedback I would provide for for such a condition is that it would be really difficult to craft in a way that was meaningful and enforceable. In particular, because the the site, regardless of what specific operation is happening there, the site has to have enough lighting to provide for safety. And so we could get into this catch 22 of trying to figure out, you know, how much lighting is required for safety. I think sticking with the standards that are actually already included in the conditions that they're night sky compliant and that the lighting doesn't leave the site, you know, that shielded such that it doesn't leave the site kind of accomplishes the same goal. And I, you know, I do want to be you know, cautious of, you know, extending our approval into something that would, you know, approach the operations hours. I don't believe they're currently open 24 hours of food mark. And I'm not sure if the proposal is to have the pumps available 24 hours, but if they are, they would need some level of lighting to have that be a safe place to pump your gas and.
Okay, but security lighting is referenced separately in the conditions of approval already. As as a separate lighting issue. So I, it appears that we may have to assume that the operational hours for this business are 24 hours. There's automatic payment at the pump. So any other comments as part of our commission deliberations? Okay, in that case, I'd like to call for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve file number 20101, a design review. Do I need to add anything, David?
You could say adopting the findings and conditions. And if you wanted to add any of the amendments that were discussed, the four-inch lettering that Commissioner Figueroa brought up, the lighting hours that was brought up a couple of times. Or anything that was discussed that was beyond the existing conditions, you would want to add that as well.
I'm going to add what you just said.
The four-inch.
Four-inch lettering, which is also consistent with the fire department. They like their lettering four inches too. Can you read back? Can can you say the the motion for me, please? With all those things?
Absolutely. So I think what I heard was to, your motion is to approve the All Points Gas Station rebrand design review, which is file number 2001, adopting the findings or the action with findings and conditions with the modification that the the lettering on the marquee sign be four inches, not two inches.
So moved.
We have a second.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Director Loyah, would you be willing to call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Vasquez?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Davies?
Yes.
Commissioner Barstow?
Hi.
Commissioner White?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Mayor?
Yes. Okay, it appears that the motion has passed. And the project is approved with the conditions of approval as specified in that motion. Okay. And and we have a recording of who voted how on the recording, so and let's see from here to our next item. We'll close this hearing. And we'll ask Director Loyah if there are any correspondence or communications. Oh, oh, sorry. I think we have to do the business item first. Have any business items?
We do. We do not have any business items.
Okay, and do we have any correspondence or communications from staff or from members of the commission?
Commissioner Barstow?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the sign regulations are probably the most ignored and violated sections of the land use code. And I highly recommend that everybody read them. Or maybe not, because then when you're going around town, it drives you crazy to see all these signs that that you know are not permitted. Anyhow, so signs are a real touchy subject and everybody who wants a sign, wants the biggest sign that they can get, you know, always bigger than the next guy. And it's not always appropriate and it's not always necessary.
Hey, any other correspondence or communications from staff or from members of the commission?
I do have just a couple of things to relate to the planning commission. One is that our next meeting will actually be in a webinar format. Sort of slightly different format than what we've had here due for, which is more of just an open meeting format that'll allow a little bit more control over when the applicants are able to participate and are allowed entry and the public and how they can comment. People will be able to log in directly into Zoom if that's how they wish to view the meeting and participate by making comments directly in the meeting that will be mediated. And so our next meeting will be a webinar. It'll be interesting to try that out for a change. The other item I wanted to let the planning commission know about, because I know that, you know, public engagement is very important to you all, is that city staff have been working with the Institute of Local Government or the ILG for 18 months, close to two years now, with their with their boost program. It's a program that's designed to enhance and support efforts that cities and jurisdictions throughout the state are going through. They've got a handful of these boost communities that have been participating with them. And the City of Arcata has been fortunate enough to be selected as one. In addition to the training that they've been providing us, and most of that training has been with community development staff focused on public engagement largely around the infill planning work that we're doing right now. They've also provided us tons of support for grant applications that we've recently been awarded, including the Sustainable Agricultural Land Conservation Grant that we received, some SB2 grants, the Infill Infrastructure Grant that we recently received. And I haven't totaled the the numbers up yet, but the, you know, the grants that we've brought in have brought in millions of dollars for our community, upwards of $30 million into the community for projects. And so I just wanted to highlight and support, you know, the Institute of Local Government and the great work that they're doing. And mention that, and last week they brought their tiers training, which stands for Think, Initiate, Engage, Review, and Shift. So it's a method of engaging the community that's really designed at deep engagement, meaningful engagement. They brought that training to the entire city staff. I had the pleasure of working with Dilo, Jennifer Dartar, Community Development Director, and Katie, our communications person here at the City of Arcata, to help design a program that city staff attended to really sort of cross departments engage in this really important work we're doing. We all know, we've heard it before from times when we've noticed a public hearing and people, you know, got the notice in their mail or or, you know, come to the meeting and said, hey, I just got this notice. What's going on? And they're, you know, they're they're not happy. They're not happy about the level of engagement they received. They're not happy about the project. They're not happy that you're making a decision about it, and they didn't have a chance to think too much about it. And they asked staff, well, what happened? And we have to say, well, you know, it's the legal legal requirement. And this is the the level of engagement engagement we're legally required to do. The tiers training goes way above and beyond. Now, obviously, the different situations call for different levels of engagement. Sometimes that legally minimum threshold is appropriate. But with this planning work that we're doing, we're really excited to use this tiers training across the across departments and across the city to really bring people into the work that we're doing. Obviously, it's going to be complicated by COVID and, you know, we'll have access issues, but we're developing strategies for working through those two. So I just wanted to let the planning commission know that we were supported by the Institute of Local Governments, that they did provide the tiers training to the city just last week. And we'll be looking to implement those more in-depth engagement strategies in the future. That's all I have.
Any other communications with staff, correspondence?
Commissioner White has her hand raised.
Yeah, Commissioner White.
Just wondering if we may have access as planning commissioners to any of the printed materials that may have been disseminated, given out to everyone?
Absolutely. Yeah, and in fact, we recorded the training as well. It was very interactive, so we're thinking about trying to edit it down so you'll get more impact in shorter amount of time and try and cut out some of the interactivity. So we'll, but we'll provide that to you if it's of interest as well.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else?
Seeing none.
Okay, seeing none, I think that we are done with the business and correspondence of this meeting. There are no further items on the agenda, so we are adjourned.